We have a member joining us electronically. And is there a motion to approve electronic participation by a school board?
Motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Mr. Alain? Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Mrs. Lowry? Good to join us. I can see her on the table. You got pleasure, please?
Yes, I'm here.
Pleasure, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Connor, is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion?
Second.
You want to say something?
I just wanted to ask a question before you approve the agenda. I was gonna ask tonight, could we remove the policy approval under consent agenda? The reason why I ask, there are a large number of policies, and I know that there were some questions, so I want to make sure that board members have ample time to go and review those policies prior to approval, if that's okay? So, thank you.
You made a motion, you want amended to take that?
Motion to amend the consent agenda, or the...
I don't, to motion to approve the agenda with the amendment of taking that Right. policy item out.
Okay, so my motion is to approve the agenda with a subtext of removing one of the items from the consent agenda.
That's the policy discussion. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next one is chair comment. I don't have anything, public comments, Mr. Connor.
I have three people signed up, but I want to give the guidelines for public comments in accordance with policy, BDDH, Public Participation. Members of the community are invited and encouraged to attend meetings of the Lynchburg City School Board to observe its deliberations. Any member of the community may address the board on matters related to the Lynchburg City Schools at any regular meeting. Persons or group wishing to address the board must do so, may do so by choosing one of the following: Leave a voice message on the school board cloaks phone line. Messages will be played during the public comment section of the school board meeting. Address the board in person during the public meeting. Persons desiring to address the school board by voicemail message shall submit the voicemail message to the school board clerk no later than 3:30 PM on the day of the board meeting. Persons desiring to address the school board in person shall contact the clerk of the school board no later than 3:30 PM on the day of the board meeting, or by signing the public comment form, which shall be available to the public 15 minutes before the meeting starts. Each person requesting to speak shall identify the subject they want to address, and if the speaker represents a group, the speaker must identify the group. Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures. Should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures. Make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to the public official or employee's official duties. Engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. The representative shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at school board meetings is 30 minutes. Voicemail messages to be played are also limited to three minutes for individuals and five minutes for speakers representing a group. Priority will be given to in-person comments before voicemail messages in the following order: One, students; two, staff; three, parents/guardians; four, community members. Public comments are reserved for the public to provide input. The board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. The chair is responsible for orderly conduct of the meeting and rules on such matters, such as appropriateness of the subject being presented and the length of time for such presentation. No one will be allowed to make additional presentations until everyone who wishes to speak has an opportunity to make an initial presentation. Upon recognition by the chair, the speaker shall clearly state name, address, and subject of the speaker's remarks. The speaker shall address the chair, and if at the conclusion of the speaker's remarks, any school board member desires further information, said member addresses the speaker only with permission of the chair. The courtesy of the school board shall be extended to the speaker, and the speaker shall respect the privilege extended by the school board or be ruled out of order by the chair. So tonight, we have three speakers, all parents. First, we'll have Justin Hensley, followed by Kristiana Stafford, and then followed by Kathleen Stafford.
Good evening, members of the board and superintendent. My name is Dr. Justin Hensley, and my spouse and I are parents of four children in Lynchburg City Schools. Two of our children have IEPs, and one of them has significant special needs. I want to begin by saying thank you this evening. Thank you for the work that deeply matters to families like ours. We understand the challenges that come with leading a large and diverse school division, and we genuinely appreciate your commitment to serving every student in this community. As you know, the division is in the process of hiring a new director of special education. For families like ours, this position is not just an administrative role, it directly shapes the day-to-day experiences of our children, their progress, and their sense of belonging in school. We've lived through two very different chapters under two very different directors since our time here. Under the one before Ms. Burks, we faced confusion, inconsistency, and barriers that created unnecessary hardship, both academically and emotionally. But when Ms. Burks stepped into the role, everything changed. She brought professionalism, empathy, and a collaborative spirit that rebuilt trust and created stability. For the first time, we felt like we were working with the school system instead of constantly struggling to be heard. That shift made a tangible difference for our children and for us as parents, and that's why this next hire is so critically important. The leadership of this department sets the tone for families, and schools partner together to meet the needs of students with disabilities across the division. Earlier this month, on 2 October, I sent an email to the superintendent sharing these same thoughts and offering to assist in any way during the hiring process. Although I haven't yet received response, I wanted to come tonight and reiterate our willingness and our hope that families' perspectives will be included in this important decision. Parents of children with disabilities see the impact of these leadership choices every single day. We see it when a child with dyslexia comes home in tears because testing accommodations in their IEP weren't followed that day. When a student with communication challenges is disciplined for behaviors that are really frustration or sensory overload. When a child with complex or cognitive needs is placed in a setting that just doesn't fit. And these aren't isolated experiences, these are realities that families quietly carry. And the difference between responsive compassionate special education director and an inconsistent one can literally determine whether a child grows or withdraws, whether their parent trusts the school system, or feels forced to fight it. That's why including families' voices in this hiring process matters so deeply. Families don't expect perfection, but we do expect partnership. Even something as simple as a listening session, a parent advisory council for the hire, or feedback panel before the hire would send a significant and powerful signal that LCS is committed to learning from those living, those experiences every day. Our family stands ready to serve in any capacity that would be helpful. So thank you, first of all, for your leadership, also for your continuing progress that began under Ms. Burks, and for your dedication to ensuring that every child, regardless of ability, has access to appropriate and meaningful education. Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have Ms. Kristiana Stafford.
Good evening, members of the school board, superintendent, and members of the community. My name is Kristiana Stafford, and I'm both a parent in Lynchburg City Schools and an educator with a master's degree in trauma-informed education. I'm here tonight to speak about the proposed update to the volunteer policy and to share my deep concern about how a recent failure to enforce the current existing policy has affected my family. Earlier this year, my child was involved in an incident where an adult volunteer coach in a position of authority verbally threatened and physically intimidated my child. This incident has significantly impacted my son's academics as well as his mental health. In the weeks since, I have done everything I can to understand how this was ever allowed to happen. Through a Freedom of Information Act request, I learned that this volunteer's background check was completed, signed, and approved by Human Resources. The assistant director of HR, her signature is on that background check. And that background check showed felony convictions for violent crimes, and that should have disqualified him from volunteering under the current existing policy for volunteers. I reached out directly to both the superintendent and the school board to share my concerns and request accountability. The superintendent responded that she would investigate and get back to me, but it has now been weeks, and I've heard nothing further. Other than the responses from the departments processing my FERPA and FOIA requests, no one in leadership has yet to personally address the underlying issue or the harm that this incident has caused my family. To me, the proposed policy change feels incredibly performative. It doesn't address my real concern, which is how this individual was ever allowed to coach children in the first place. I've tried to be patient and trust that the review process would bring resolution, but at this point, I am deeply discouraged. No one appears to be held accountable for the failures that led to this incident, and now I'm spending even more time trying to ensure that others are not punished for the mistakes that were made within the division. This is not a policy problem. This is an accountability problem. The safeguards that could have prevented this already existed within the current policy. They just were not enforced. I'm also deeply concerned that these proposed revisions would undo years of thoughtful work by an Equity Task Force, which developed a balanced policy that protected students while still allowing rehabilitated, nonviolent individuals to volunteer in their children's schools. Rolling back that progress would be a serious step backwards, one that would disproportionately harm minority families who are already overrepresented in the criminal justice system and have long faced barriers to engagement in public education. I urge you not to let this incident become the justification for aggressive change. Do not make it harder for good people to be involved in their children's education. Instead, please hold accountable the people who failed to uphold the safeguards that were already in place, and commit to stronger oversight, transparency, and integrity moving forward. Our community deserves both fairness and safety, and we can achieve both of these through accountability, not overcorrection. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathleen Stafford, also a parent.
I'm here today on my child's birthday, speaking as a concerned community member and LCS parent, to call for transparency, accountability, and an unwavering commitment to protecting the children of Lynchburg City Schools. First, I must acknowledge, I'm disheartened, concerned, and honestly truly disturbed that the policy review and surrounding information have not been acknowledged within the LCS community, especially to parents that deserve to know what has happened. Our community's trust in the school system depends on clear communication, ethical leadership, and the assurance that the well-being of students always come first. When safety concerns or misconduct arise, families deserve honesty, acknowledgement, and meaningful action, not silence or policy shifts that deflect responsibility. Rather than implementing new or potentially limiting policies, I urge the board and administration to enforce the policies already in place and ensure they're applied, they are applied consistently and transparently. Unfortunately, consistency and transparently are in here so many times that it's hard to, you know, not mess this up. Accountability is not achieved through distraction or bureaucracy, but through integrity and follow-through. Specifically, I'm asking for transparency, clear communication with families about incidents affecting student safety and the district's response. Parents deserve to know who is and who has worked with their children, even if and especially when the district has failed to keep children safe. Accountability: consistent enforcement of existing policies and fair consequences when violations occur. Acknowledgement: open recognition when harm or procedural failure happens rather than minimizing or rebranding the issue. Commitment to child protection: number one. Continued evaluation of staff practices, background checks, and reporting systems to ensure every student's safety. These are not unreasonable demands or requests, they are the bare minimum required for a public school system or any system that deals with children or people at all, that values children over image and honesty over convenience. I respectfully request a public response outlining how Lynchburg City Schools will uphold its duty to protect students, ensure transparency, and rebuild community trust through real accountability, not new policies that obscure the issue. And I'll end with this reflection: When you proclaim every child by name and by need to graduation and beyond, which children are we really referring to here? Thank you for your attention to this urgent matter and for your commitment to the students and family you serve.
Thank you. Do we have any voicemails?
No, sorry.
Any emails?
No, sorry.
That concludes our public comment portion.
Thank you, Mr. Connor. Next one is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve with, with in mind that item three has been pulled out? Is there a motion?
It would have been my motion, so.
Is there a second to approve the consent agenda?
Still move.
So, madam clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Baron?
Yes.
Mr. Alain?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mr. Gilio?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Next one is finance report, Dr. Majet.
Ms. James?
Good evening, Chairman, Dr. Gupta, members of the school board, and Dr. Majet. You have before you the September 30, 2025 month-end financials. As of September, it marks the 25% of the fiscal year passing. The percent of revenues collected versus original appropriation was at 17.05%. I will note that that is ahead of collections prior to last year. The amount of expenditures versus original appropriation is at 21.33% year-to-date, and the total expenditures inclusive of encumbrances equates to 83.0%. There were no new notable variances from last month's report to let you know about. So, on the statement of revenues, the total amount of revenues collected was $20,311,985.96 year-to-date. Of the total, state revenues equated to 19.35%, federal revenues equated to 18.45%, and local revenues equated to 12.67%. Our miscellaneous and charges for services, collection rates are 19.81% and 33.27% respectively. So, on the monthly summary report, as far as health insurance, as of September, LCS has a year-to-date balance of -674,595.78. I expect that amount to come up as soon as we have completed our 2025 annual audit. So, if there are any questions, if there are no questions, then that concludes my report.
Questions for Ms. James? I have a few questions.
Yes, sir.
So, I see compared to 2024 and 2025, everything has gone up.
Yes, sir.
And the revenues are up, the expenditures are disproportionately up?
Yes, sir.
Health insurance is a negative. I'm just, the reason I'm asking this question is, but, you know, if you do a home budget management, if you're spending more money, you're looking at the end of the month saying, will I have enough money to sustain? So, my question is, will we have enough money when June 30th comes to pay our bills? Because we are $7 million up in expenditure compared to last year.
So, currently, we're projecting, including inclusive of encumbrances, about an 83% spend. Now, of course, there will be additional expenditures as the year processes, but right now, I think we are where we are, it is to be expected.
So, what's the reason for, like, expenditures to be $7 million higher compared to last year?
So...
Is there anomaly in the...
So, I think you're referring to the revenues?
I'm sorry, no, the expenditure is $25 million, and 24 September was $18 million.
So, there are some contracts in there that have processed earlier in September, that processed later in October, according to last year. But even with those contracts and those encumbrances, we're still only at a projection of 83.03% spend.
You see my concern?
Yes, sir.
The city gives us flat money, barely surviving, and we got $7 million more. So, what I'm hearing from you, there's nothing to be alarmed about.
I am comfortable with where we are currently, barring any unusual expenses coming down the pike. I'm comfortable with where we are, so.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is this really just a timing issue?
It is a timing issue. So, your revenues are always reimbursed later because it's an expense lag, so.
And that's the reason why you're not concerned?
Potentially. I mean, there are some things outside of our control going on right now where revenues are concerned, so that plays into that as well.
Thanks so much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. Next one is the unfinished business.
I have a question.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, I didn't see the back. Go ahead.
Ms. James?
Yes, ma'am.
Is any of that due to the money we're supposed to get from city council?
Actually, we have received more as of September 30 from city council than we did this time last year. So, there hasn't been a delay in the delivery of their funding.
Okay, it was mainly for the collaboration that we had, that committee collaboration, where we're supposed to get funds for getting things done in the, in the construction part that we needed, like the track and things like that. That's why I was wondering maybe that's part of the contracts you were talking about.
So, this is Fund One. It's our local operating fund. You're referring to our capital improvement program? Those funds have already been received and are in the queue waiting to be spent for this year. Yes.
I think, I'm not speaking for her, maybe the lag is because of the federal government closure? Is that, that's what you...
So...
Are we getting the funding for last 21 days, or is it...
There is a lot of things going on at the state and the federal level. There are some, a VDOE has some staff shortages, and they are the ones that kind of process our revenues. So, it, I think it's a culmination of things. If I were concerned about it, I would alert you immediately, but I don't have any concerns at this point in the fiscal year.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next one is unfinished business, entry plan, feedback presentation, Dr. Majet.
Good evening. Perfect.
You got slides?
Yeah, it's slides. I won't keep you all night. Good evening, everyone. First, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to share my findings from my first little bit over 90 days here as superintendent for Lynchburg City Schools. This presentation tonight is going to summarize what I've learned through the meetings, the school visits, community conversations, of course, data analysis here. The goal has been to listen, to learn, and to understand where we are. I'm not on that slide yet. Okay, thank you. To learn where we are as a division, understand where we're going to go, so that we can plan together for where we want to go. Although I am in phase two of the entry plan, the process of listening and learning doesn't stop here. Three months is not enough to know everything I need to know about Lynchburg City Schools. However, with the number of challenges that we face, I would be remiss if I did not understand the necessity to act and move forward. So, before I get to my presentation, I do want to thank you all, school board, my central office, and building leadership teams, the teachers, the staff, for the honesty and the candor throughout this process. The openness has helped me to shape a clear picture of both our strengths and our opportunities for growth, and the honesty has truly been invaluable as we determine what must come next. So, the next slide. All right. So, the entry plan has served as a roadmap for my transition. So, we're now in phase two. That's going to focus on analyzing, the planning, the reporting, and leading. This phase is about taking what I've heard and what I've observed, and identifying those areas that we need alignment, using that insight to guide our work together. And I will say, the process has been very collaborative from the beginning. It emphasizes our partnership, shared ownership, collective responsibility for moving the division forward. And just letting you know, my intent is not only to observe, but to begin leading with clarity and structure, building on what already works well in Lynchburg City Schools. And you'll see as I'm going along, I'm not reading the slides, I know everybody here can read, so, but I just wanted to give a summation of what my thoughts are, so. I just wanted to provide that clarity in case you're like, what she's saying doesn't match there. It's just a summation. I know that you all have read this. So, on to the next. There were, to guide the process, I asked the following questions of everyone that I had the opportunity to interview. What do you see as the biggest strengths for LCS? What challenges do you believe LCS is currently facing? What expanded opportunities or new ideas could help make LCS even stronger in the future? How can you best support student learning and success? And then, how do other aspects of the Lynchburg community impact our schools and students? So, these questions frame my conversations in school visits, they guided discussions with teachers, admin, students, family, several community members, and then they help to ensure that their observations and their insights that were collected were meaningful and grounded in real experiences. So, to give you some of the next slide. So, to give you some of the highlights in terms of when you look at those questions and the strengths of LCS. So, one of the most consistent themes that emerged throughout these conversations was the dedication of people here. Lynchburg City Schools is filled with educators and staff who want the best for students, and the dedication to teaching and learning and overall well-being of students was noted, excuse me, was noted as a strength of the division based on those interviews. We also have several community partners who enrich opportunities for our students' programs. We received a lot of compliments about the programs in terms of Korean technical education, the strings, athletics, and then the arts, and they highlight the wide range of experiences that were available to students. And what I discovered here is a strength, that there was a clear sense of pride in the community, and that sense of connection and support gives a strong foundation for the work ahead. Things that were noted as challenges, and so I always want to be clear, every school division has areas for improvement, and it's important that we discuss them honestly. So, throughout this process, there were several challenges that were identified or emerged. Teacher retention and recruitment continue to be a pressing issue. Compensation, workload, and morale were significant factors that teachers and staff indicated that had to be addressed to ensure stability in the classrooms. Communication and trust were recurring themes. There was reports of inconsistent messaging, delayed timelines, unclear expectations that create confusion and frustration for staff and families. Additionally, persistent achievement gaps among students and ongoing needs in terms of facilities affect morale and perception. And so, by acknowledging, and these are all snapshots, by acknowledging these challenges openly, it gives us the opportunity to develop solutions. And so, alongside the challenges, there were tremendous opportunities. And so alongside the challenges, there were tremendous opportunities here. And this was that question where I asked, what expanded opportunities or new ideas could help LCS make, make us even stronger in the future? So, um, some of the recurring themes were strengthen teacher development and leadership, expanding professional learning opportunities, improving our onboarding processes. Um, there were recommendations for compensation adjustments, um, to help better support hard-to-fill positions and reward leadership at the various levels. Um, there was a lot of opportunity for revisiting alternative education programs to ensure that we're meeting the needs of students who require different pathways. And then also for those same students, um, strengthening, strengthening intervention services and expanding career and technical opportunities so that students, although in an alternative setting, are ready to enter the world. And then also partnerships with parents, universities, local organizations, community partners to create deeper engagement. I know, and, um, I, I say it all the time, uh, to several people, but in one of my, uh, interviews, and I'm not going to say with whom, but the individual said, "We are resource-rich and allocation-poor." And that was one of the recurring themes, and that stuck with me, but that was one of the recurring themes as I interviewed people, was, hey, we have all the partnerships and we appreciate all the partnerships, but how do we collectively wrap this around students to ensure success? And so that leads to the next piece in terms of best supporting students. Uh, when I asked, how can we best support student learning and success? The responsible, responses were thoughtful and they were consistent. One of the first things that came up, that communication must be clear, proactive, and consistent. I received some great feedback from one of the principals that said to me, and she was like, "I'm going to be honest." And that's why I say I thank people for the candor. She said, "I want to see that central office is ahead of where we need to be as principals." You know, and it stings when you hear it, but you can only get better if you hear, you know, if you hear, um, feedback. And so she gave some really good feedback with that, and those things, they help us as a team to ensure that, hey, how do we make sure we're proactive and consistent? People want to know what's happening and why decisions are made, and then consistency builds trust and co, um, confidence and trust. Second, looking at teachers needing strong support, providing resources, training, um, so that they can focus their time on instruction. I've heard a lot about how teachers, and we know this, supporting teachers directly impacts students. And then looking at classrooms, uh, making sure that we have engaging, structured, and safe environments. Students feel and challenged and supported by teachers who are equipped to meet their needs. And then overall, just ensuring that operations is always flowing in a way that it runs smoothly so teachers can focus on the main thing, teaching. Students can focus on learning. So the question about community impact, um, our schools are a reflection of the community around us. A lot of the information I received, um, was, and it was very plain, it was consistent. They were saying that, you know, poverty, sometimes housing instability, trauma, and other social factors can directly influence student learning, and that was some of the things that I wanted to share because that's what I heard from some teachers saying, hey, these are impacts, and we have to be aware of these impacts. Um, and that from there, uh, the notion that we need to really focus on wraparound supports and community partnerships and how important, how important they are, and just continuing to work closely with all of our local partners. Another piece that came, theme that came up consistently was that we need to tell our story more intentionally. Uh, celebrating the achievements of all our students, staff, and schools helps shape positive perceptions and build community pride. And when you look at that, I think sometimes we get the, only the negative narrative, but we have some students that are doing really amazing things. We have teachers who are doing really amazing things. But I think it's easy to focus in on, hey, these are one or two things that didn't go well, but there may have been twenty that went very well that day. And so being more intentional about showcasing our people. And then when families and communities, um, family, community members just wanting to be informed, respected, and connected, and building that trust. So I always like to look at where we are. So understanding our starting point. There we go. Um, so it's important to recognize where we stand today. I know I shared at the last meeting, um, where we rank one-twenty-two out of one-thirty-one. Um, that represents where we are currently, but it doesn't represent our potential and where we're going. We do have dedicated staff, community partners, but one of the things I've noticed, the lack of consistent systems and communication, it slows our process. It called, the minutia, we get stuck in the loop of stuff. And so moving forward, just focus on creating clarity and structure across the division, accountability at every level. And from leadership to teachers to students, parents, and families, because we're all responsible for the success of these students. And so acknowledging where we are allows us to build a realistic and focused plan on where we plan on going. And so you heard me talk a lot about it at the last meeting about strengthening processes and systems. But our next major focus is strengthening how we can operate, how we operate as a division. And so I'll repeat it again. When I refer to systems and processes, I'm talking about creating consistency in how we do the work. How do we do the work that we do every day? And right now, procedures vary from school to school, from one office to another, and we can be in the same building and those procedures vary, and that's not good. Because if we have a lot of confusion, if the adults have confusion and things aren't clear, the kids are going to be confused. And they, and we're here to serve them. And so that lack of alignment, um, it, you'll have things that often duplicate it, and then everybody's frustrated. So strong systems in place will ensure that everyone knows what expect, what's expected. Communication can move smoothly, and the staff can have the tools they need, uh, to move forward. And so I'm going to touch on accountability again. And so it's not about blame, not blaming anyone, but it truly is about ownership and responsibility. So I look at every person in the division has a role in ensuring that success. Me, as superintendent, I do. Um, board, because you, you, you making big decisions and policy decisions for our school division. Um, administrators, teachers, staff, family, and students, we're all accountable for moving, um, supporting students. And so once we can build into those systems and that accountability at every level, then we build that level of credibility with everyone. We can build that level of trust. But we're going to have to make those steps first. There's no quick fix to this, so I want to be very clear. You don't go from seventy-five to one-twenty-two over that course of time, and then you're going to shoot right up. But we have to get orders and structure and processes in place as to, this is how we're going to do the work that we're going to do. Um, so next, with that, centering around our students, because that's our main thing. The main focus should be kids. Like, what are we going to do for kids? We recognize that we have a lot of stipulations, that things that say, hey, the DOE, VDOE, the Department of Ed says we have to do these things. The law says we have to do it in certain ways. But are there ways that we can simplify things and processes so that we can be at a place where the center of all of our decisions are about kids? And so whether it's an initiative, a staffing decision, a policy discussion, but just how can we best support children? Um, one of the things also that came up, just looking at strengthening academic and behavioral supports, looking at those additional pathways for those students. I know I mentioned alternative ed, um, earlier. And really just moving forward with intentionality. Have a purpose. Say what we're going to do, actually do it, and, and move forward, but keeping it simple and keeping kids at the center. So lastly, I told you I wasn't going to keep you all night, but I do want to say this piece. Um, I know that I said last time that we had hoped that the accountability and accreditation ratings would be here by this point so that we could tell you everything that's happening in terms of where we rate. Instructionally, the Department of Education is not done yet. It's my understanding that they're still working through. I had a, the regional super, superintendent's meeting earlier today, and we don't have a clear indication as to when we will get that. I doubt it will not, that, I doubt that it'll be this week. It's supposed to be about a one-week window between when they'll let us see it as far as the superintendent and, and deputy superintendent, and then before it gets released to the public. So that was the last communication that we have. But with that, once we have it and it's available, we'll share it with the board and the community, and along with any instructional insights and next steps. Um, but I, I just want to say a few things, and as we move forward, our focus is going to continue to remain on both listening, um, and action. Because we, I continue to listen, but we, you know, I have to lead and we have to move forward. And, and every shift is not going to be, um, I always look at it, every shift isn't, may not be the fan favorite, but it's going to be made with kids in mind, and what's going to be in the best interest of those students and the best-serve kids. So I always want to, uh, put that out there. Uh, accountability will continue to guide our efforts. It's not, it will not rest only on schools or principals. I think sometimes it's easy to say. Now, principals are responsible for what happens in their building, but we're also at Central Office responsible for making sure principals have what they need to effectively lead. And I always say, and the team has heard me say many times, kids don't choose us, but we get paid twice a month. So we're obligated to do what we're supposed to do for kids. Have I not said that a million times? Okay. But, you know, we're, we're, we have a level of accountability and, you know, we have choices, but many of our kids don't have choices to be here. So I just want to make sure that we do everything we can to best support them. And I know, uh, you know, I'm not normally a quote person, but I did like this. Uh, excellence is not achieved by chance. It's built through structure, consistency, and people working together. But that is the quick version of my first ninety days. Um, that is not everything. That is not everything, but I definitely just wanted to give you all just a broad overview of what my findings were, um, and just thanking the community and you all, everyone, for just your honesty and working through this process and answering my many questions that I have, so.
Are you open for questions?
Oh, absolutely. Thank you.
Questions for Dr. Midget? Comments?
I appreciate this. I read through it earlier, and I just, I, so much resonates. And it's a lot of what I'm hearing as I talk to people. I think you hit it on the nose and have a clear picture. Um, and, you know, one of the things I came on board to say, I'm going to speak to these three things, and one of those things is this idea of leading in transition. This is just a different way of moving. Like, transition leadership is, is very difficult, and you're, you're handling a lot of things that people don't see and don't understand. So I, I just want to express support for your findings and the way that you've, you've led to this point, um, and acknowledge that, you know, it's difficult to catch everything, and sometimes it, things get dropped along the way. But I can speak to, at least my experience, that you guys are working really hard to, uh, make positive progress, and I'm excited to continue diving into like our strategic, uh, planning process and, and get that on. Um, I, I just want to emphasize the support for you leading in transition. It's just a tough, it's a tough thing to do.
Thank you.
Other comments?
It's a good summary. Uh, what do you think that you are going to focus on, eh, two, maybe two or three things, and what you'd like to see by the spring or summer next year?
Uh, I'm going to be honest with you. I would love to say there would be two or three things that I, I could focus on. Um, we have so many areas of crisis, to be honest with you, that it's probably our hands, our feet. Everything is touching, a little bit of everything at, at once. Um, so I would say just, it, of course, we've, we've moved through, um, I can tell you the things that we, we have revamped some. Um, I, I'm very thankful for some of the, the changes in terms of HR and personnel and the responsiveness and response time to staffing and working towards that. Are we a hundred percent where we need to be? No, no. People just got on board. But at the same time, cleaning up those processes, and I've been very thankful, Ms. Brown and that crew, for just kind of moving that along. Um, operations were closing all those multiple maintenance tickets and things like that. Sonia just was always keeping us financially afloat. Um, Dr. Davis for, and, and everyone else. So if I don't say your name, don't worry. You know, I'm not leaving you out. Dr. Davis for just, uh, being that right hand and riding that ride. So when I think about it, um, and everything she's pouring into instruction daily, I would love to say two or three things, but instruction, um, is extremely important. But we got to take, make sure operations continues to flow. Kids are at school on time, they're picked up on time. Um, that we're retaining teachers, we're following up on licensure. So honestly, I would tell you all of it. I, I mean, I, I wish that there were just one or two things at this point, but, but all of it. Working with the communication structures, I've had, um, you know, trying to, I, I will say I'm appreciative of teachers who've come forth, those who, uh, are part of LEA and those who are not a part of LEA. But it's been, um, helpful just getting that feedback of what they need right now, getting supports in the hands of them, making sure that we look at alternative ed and how we can expand that so that we can make sure that we're serving kids appropriately, um, in their appropriate setting. So I know that's a long answer, but it, my hands are touching so much at one time. I wish that it was one or two things, but we really are, um, at a, at a point of crisis, so it's a lot all at once.
I can see how you have to balance a lot because there's so many aspects that need to improve. I, I still believe that if you focus on two or three items...
I wish we could.
You know, in a full year. This is a, it's a big ship to turn.
I agree. I, I mean, I wish I could, but it, it's, it's a bit more than, than two to three, unfortunately. It is.
Mrs. Lowry, go ahead then, Mr. Paul.
Um, I just want to say to everyone that is watching the school board meeting, especially that are faculty and staff, um, as I go to visit schools, I want people to understand that this administration, I like what, um, you said, Dr. Majette, about candor and clarity, because I feel like people are still a little admin shy, um, because of the past. So everyone, why I keep emphasizing, please email your superintendent, she will listen. So I thank you for the candor and the clarity piece because I feel like people may start to branch up out a little bit if they feel like you're a safe space, and I feel like you are. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Paul?
Uh, yeah, uh, thanks for, uh, for the detailed summary. Um, you know, definitely have a lot of, a lot of work to do, um, as a community and as a, a school system. Uh, I wanted to ask about the, the rank, the ranking.
Yes.
You know, it's, um, more out in public now and different things of that nature. And we know we didn't get to that rank just in the last year or whatever. This, this goes all the way back to two thousand and six. Um, and, um, one thing that I was thinking about and wanted to know, just as, as I speak with different people in the public and, uh, and the community, is, eh, you know, the rank is the rank, but what actually encompasses that rank? Is there something that the community and the public can, can, can actually see the actual context of how that ranking actually came about instead of just a number? But exactly what categories make up that ranking? And I think that would be helpful because I don't think it's just an LCS issue. I think it's a community issue personally. And, and if the community can actually see the categories in which we are ranked, um, I think that also helps give us something to be able to work towards. Um, so it's a twofold, so they can see what actually is causing, um, our issues and how we can, um, can, can, can pick that up. So maybe, um, some type of communication to the public about how we got to that rank and what the categories are would probably be helpful.
Yes, a, absolutely. And we, um, we hope maybe when we come back to the November eleventh board meeting that the Department of Ed would have released that information. So that'll be great because we could do the accountability and accreditation and provide the ranking in terms of what were those components that got us there. So yes, sir. We'll absolutely do that.
I wasn't going to say anything because, like, you didn't want to keep us here all night, but here I am extending that. I just want you to know, I, you have my full support, and every day I learn how much more is on your plate. From macroeconomic view, we need to have this out there because when we're at one-twenty-two out of one-thirty-one, Bedford's at thirty-six out of one-twenty, uh, one-thirty-one, Campbell County is about fifty or fifty-five out of one-thirty-one. We have people looking to come here to be, uh, professionals, coming here and, uh, to, or considering coming here for jobs. And one thing that we need to do is like what you just said, um, this is a community issue because we're going to fall behind the eight ball so quickly, because people are not going to be moving into this community. They're going to move to Bedford, they're going to move to, uh, Campbell County. And we need to get ahead of this, and with the candor that you have made mention about, uh, there's only one way to do it, and that's be with total transparency, total candor, uh, and, and to be as direct as we possibly can with all the thing, with all the information we have available to us. So I, I know you're the person to do it, and you have my support, and I just want you to know that, um, of all the things I've asked you, I, I don't really mean to make your job more difficult, but I appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Esther?
Yeah, Dr. Majet, um, you know, kind of piggybacking off what the other board members have said. You know, I, I think if there's one issue maybe that we can hone in on, it might possibly be trying to see if we can change the ranking. Because, you know, people out here in the community, just to hear that number, uh, the perception is, is sort of, you know, puts us in a very, very ugly position, being frank. So I know we got a lot going on, and we're talking about students and... So I know we've got a lot going on and we're talking about students and their performances and all of that. So if at all possible, we could just sort of separate, select that one issue and see if we can change the trajectory and the perception of that in the community, I think that might be helpful to all of us as a board. Yeah. Again, we don't want to put extra burden on you.
Oh, no, the, the students, that's the main thing.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm speaking just for myself. I think, to me, the key focus is academics. And we are in business of teaching students and that should be our focus. One twenty-two ranking, we are in company of Petersburg and city of Richmond. That's not a bad company, but we don't want to be where we are the bottom of the pile. I understand the, your question is right on dot, but to me mostly is academics. You know, the SOL scores, they go and make up this ranking because as you look at the counties and the cities, if you look at the ranking, bottom is mostly, what's the common word among the bottom ten in that pile is all the word city. So they're all urban school districts. So that's an issue which needs to be resolved as a community, that all the cities, why are they ending up in the bottom of this pile? So to me, Dr. Majid, your only job for next nine months is to focus on academics and keep away from every distraction. We as school board and as community should keep you away from any and every distraction. The focus is, as you said, to take care of the child and their academic progress and success. And that should be the sole focus. No drama, no distractions, solely focusing on making the, the child's life better academically. Socially, we do it as a community, as Mr. Poe said, but academically, that's our moral and legal responsibility. But thank you for what you do. Thank you for being very honest and truthful in all these rankings. I've been on this board for a long time. This is the first time I heard whatever the ranking and however it came out to be. So it's an eye opener, but hopefully we'll, we'll, we'll resolve this issue going forward. And this step has to be going up. As Mr. DePaul said, Bedford is in thirties, Campbell is in seventies, and Amherst is in one hundred. Even three digits are not good, but we cannot go to two digits overnight. It'll take some time. But I think that we know where we are going, the direction, the goal is very clear. So thank you very much and I appreciate everything you're doing.
Thank you.
What's the next item on the agenda? School board member report?
I was going to say something.
Go ahead.
We've heard our ranking, but not exactly how we've got to that ranking, other, other than it has declined. So I'd like to learn that. Additionally, I'd like to learn if we're going to have to wait one year to learn what our ranking is again, or if they do this quarterly, periodically. I'd like to know when they do that. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is school board member report. Laurel, Mrs. Lowry.
No report at this time.
Thank you. Gub school, Mrs. Lowry again.
We are in the process of interviewing for a new director and we will be doing observations next week.
Next one is academic success committee. Mrs. Lowry again.
We have a meeting next Tuesday, so no report as of yet.
Thank you. Next one is, man, the ad hoc achievement gap committee, Mrs. Lowry again.
The meetings have concluded and have been collected. And the next thing on the agenda, which I have emailed Dr. Majid and Dr. Davis, is a meeting that we need to have to see what we can realistically look at for the solutions to apply to the school system so that we can close the gap for the children in the gap.
So you're basically taking the committee recommendations to Mrs. La, Dr. Majid and Dr. Davis and then bring it back to the board?
Yes, because we want to work together. We're not coming at the, at the administration. We want to work together with what's realistic. We have a lot of solutions that we've put down there, but you've got to do what you can only, you're able to do that's realistic. So we're going to, remember, we're working with the kids in the gap. This is not all parents. It's just the kids in the gap that are struggling the most. How do we close that gap? And that's the focus. But we want to do it without putting a huge burden on the administration and we want to do things that are realistic, that can be attained, especially those things that can be attained sooner than others.
Next one is the STEM Academy, Mr. Poe.
Yeah, thank you. So the STEM Academy on November fourteenth will be holding mock interviews for their students. Currently, the enrollment is about twenty-seven seniors, twenty-nine juniors. Seven of those seniors are from Lynchburg, nine are juniors from Lynchburg. Those numbers do make up a regional statistic. Let's see, what other updates? They'll be having fall break, October twenty through twenty-first, so they're just now getting over that. Ending their first nine weeks on October seventeenth, that just ended. I just spoke about the mock interviews. And as far as the financial report, their current revenue is three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred dollars. Encumbered funds of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand, thirty-eight, with an available balance of about two hundred and twenty-two thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand. That's pretty much all we have. We'll have another meeting coming up on November the eleventh. So more to come.
Thank you. Finance and facilities, Mr. DePaul.
We had an update on the CIP project and its progress. Things are going according to plan. We also were, it was requested of the board to approve a, the ability to seek a change order for some of the things that were being, they had to be reorganized. And I'm not sure if the full board needs to vote on that, but is Travis still? Okay. Basically, what we did was we, we approved his ability to create a change order. I believe you've done that already.
So we actually have to revisit that. I, I'd sent an email-
Yes, I, I-
-this Friday.
Okay. So it's, I just want to make sure you still have the permission to do it, but we need, I believe we need the full board's permission to, to grant that. But it came from committee that we approved his ability to go after change orders, go after this particular change order. But it's not in the works yet, so we still have a little more work to do on it.
Yeah, we want to revisit that.
Okay, fair enough. We were updated on access control measures as well as metal detectors and they creating a, a committee of, that will include stakeholders in the community as well as they want a board representative to be on this committee to, with regards to the finance and specifics about the security. And I was asked to be on it. So to bring that to the board, if anyone else, I will accept that as a nomination, but if anyone else is interested in being on that board or if they need more board members to attend, it should come up to the board for a vote.
Thank you. Next one is LECR, Mr. Jalil.
Yes, we're looking at the different schedules of our local elected and appointed officials for a legislative breakfast, but we think that the, the current election season is needing to be over for any focus to happen. So we're just getting through that right now.
Thank you. Next one is partners in education, Mr. Eileen and Dr. Farmer.
Yeah, I don't have a report.
You got more to say?
Same thing. I'm with him on this one.
Okay, it's Dr. Farmer, but go ahead.
He's on the Ed, Ed, Education Foundation. This is Partners. Are you on Partners as well?
No.
Yes. It's Partners, it's Pi. Go ahead.
No report.
No report.
Now we have.
Now the Education Foundation, Mr. DePaul and Mr. Jalil.
Just that the LCS Classroom Innovation Grant application, I believe, is open on the website. There's no other information. There is something with Partners in Education though, and I, if I, if I come across it, I'll mention it later, but just the, it's something about safety, School Safety Week or Mental Health Month, and maybe we'll bring it up later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is Beacon of Hope, Mr. Barron and Mr. Poe.
Yes, so Beacon of Hope continuing to do amazing things. And so this, just got four updates for you guys. This, next week is Virginia College Application Week. I'm hearing a lot about this because my son is a senior and getting all his applications and college essay and everything written. So they're actually hosting this week. It's a statewide initiative that helps seniors complete and submit their college applications with hands-on support from counselors, teachers, and Beacon of Hope staff. The week will culminate with On-Site Admissions Day on October thirtieth, when college representatives will meet with students and offer admission on the spot. And last year, as a result of this week, LCS students saved more than forty thousand dollars in application. That's huge. The second thing is campus visits. This month, they've offered college trips to Longwood University and Virginia Tech, providing hands-on exposure to college campuses. And these trips are available for both Heritage and EC Glass students. Thirdly is our hashtag Future Fridays. Members of Divine Fog Realtors spoke with students about the real estate industry and the same each month, they continue to give students a firsthand look at how classroom learning connects to these real world careers. So really appreciate that. Lastly, we got FAFSA nights. This is hosted at EC Glass on November sixth and at Heritage High School November thirteenth. Really important to get the word out about this. It'll be from five thirty to seven PM to help support seniors and their families with completing the free application for federal student aid. In addition to their staff, they partner with local colleges to provide financial aid representatives who will be available to answer questions and assist throughout the event. So again, great work being done by Beacon of Hope.
Thank you. Next is Student Discipline Committee, Mr. Connor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have not had a data review recently because we have had a massive caseload. Every Thursday, we are averaging between eight, seven, eight cases every Thursday evening. So we've put off the data review part, but we are working diligently and we're going to be working with the financial committee, looking at some solutions that we need in our alt ed, the whole alt ed department. But I want to commend, Ms. Dr. Sumner, who is doing an excellent job, putting together, the cases are coming together. And I want to also thank Mr. Barron and Mr. Poe and Ms. Eileen and Dr. Farmer, who has stood in for their support. We're really trying to make the, our schools a safe environment so that learning is the priority, but also finding ways to help those children that also need some additional disciplinary support. So it's probably my busiest committee right now and I think, I'm thankful for operating in it.
You know-
Yeah.
I, 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 I'm going out of line, but I, I thank you for what you do. It's not an easy, and Dr. Davis, thank you. Because people on the campus who are watching, Mr. Connor is here four days a week, this week, to the admin building for four, five hours at a stretch. And this is not compensated position, but thank you for everything, what you do every day, taking care of these kids and doing the best, what is good for them. So thank you, sir. We appreciate everything you do. You know, we thank everybody. And eight cases means you are there for thirty minutes apiece, four hours minimum. And so, but you fulfill that responsibility admirably. So thank you very much.
Next one is superintendent comment, Dr. Majid.
I will be brief, but that just, that just made me giggle in terms of the Mr. Connor piece because I am part of Mr. Connor and taking some more time for Mr. Connor and Mr. Barron this week. And I know, because I, I want to just provide a brief update on strategic plan, and they will correct me if I'm wrong, but vendor interviews do begin this week. We have two days of vendor interviews. We had twenty-eight people to submit proposals, which is huge, I think. And we're interviewing eight, I believe, if I'm correct. So it's just important work. I just wanted to thank Mr. Connor, Mr. Barron, Ms. Jamies for the countless hours and days that you've dedicated and will continue to dedicate to this process of selecting a vendor. And it really is such a critical process, so I, I just appreciate all of that because it's going to help and define that roadmap for us for the next five years for Lynchburg City Schools. So just wanted to put that out there. And one last piece, I look forward to the start of our student liaisons to the school board next month. They were going to start tonight and I apologize for the, I appreciate everybody's patience, I guess, for the, as this process begins, because this is new to me and working with those young ladies. So they will be here beginning next month and really excited, dynamic ladies from Heritage and EC Glass. So that's all my comments.
Thank you. Next one is board comment, Mr. Poe, I'll come to you, but I'll give it to Mrs. Lowry so I don't forget her.
Ladies, ladies first.
Thank you. I'm enjoying time with my mother-in-law here who's got Alzheimer's in Illinois and we're having a good time. My daughter joined me, but I've been keeping up with things on email and I've been visiting schools, enjoying reading the kids' Halloween books and things like that. So just very thankful to be part of this board and especially going in this new direction with Dr. Majid and all that she's done and her new staff and, and those that are still here and just all working together in a, I feel like a very upbeat atmosphere. So thank you for everything.
Thank you, Mrs. Lowry. Mr. Poe?
Let's see here. So today is my grandmother's ninety-fifth birthday.
Happy birthday.
She retired from Payne School a while ago, so happy birthday to her. We'll start it off like that. Again, just, I'm going to go off the heels of Mr. Connor, that disciplinary committee is, is a little rough. We were in here at almost eight o'clock and started at three thirty last Thursday, so. But it's meaningful. I actually like being on that committee and being able to connect, you know, with, with the students and the parents and, and, you know, I, I wish we did not have as many cases and hopefully one day we won't. And it just, you know, really lets me know that, you know, as you said, we're here in the education business, but unfortunately, there, there are some other needs that need to be met. And hopefully, we can figure out a way to give us some more tools to use. Because, you know, some, some of, of the issues that we face, you know, could be coming from, from, from learning styles, from environments and different things of that nature. Class sizes, all different, a whole array of issues and that just, you know, it's, it's, it's a front row seat to an eye opener to, to, to needs that need to be met for, for students. So, you know, as we work through things, as Dr. Majid said, there's so many things that need attention. We can't just focus on one. I appreciate, you know, her leadership along with the rest of admin and what, what, what's being done and also fellow school board members. And just looking forward to, you know, it's, that, that score is what it is, but at least we can go up now. So, and have a positive attitude and just connect with the community more, even if that means maybe there was a request for more transparency. So maybe having like a little newsletter that comes out, you know, once a month or every two weeks to kind of highlight what the board has talked about and, you know, what, what admin has going on, just so we can be more transparent with the LCS community as a whole. But I appreciate everybody and can keep up the good work.
Thank you. Mr. Jalil?
Yes. This is National School Bus Safety Week, so I hope we can grow in our ability to make good reports on that. It's also the VSB A Bullying Prevention Month. And I'd like to read a brief portion of the website on this issue, which says, VSB A will publicize Bullying Prevention Month in our newsletter, on the VSB website and through social media, and will send out a statewide news release urging news organizations to provide coverage of local activities. School divisions are encouraged to issue their own news releases, and it would be helpful if divisions would apprise the VSB A of any related activities taking place in their division. Potential activities include adopting a proclamation, utilizing social media, implementing school-wide activities, or hosting educational workshops. And there's some more there on their website. Also, this is the week before the Virginia Association of- Also, this is the week before the Virginia Association of School Superintendents gathering, so you can just pray for them, I'm not involved with that. It is my mother's birthday today, so I, I'm just appreciative to her, and I hope and pray that one day we can celebrate it together again. Briefly, visiting schools, the policy that changed where the board members visit schools and have to report the day before at 12 has not been working out for me in particular. I've had a handful or two of opportunities to go to schools where I didn't remember the location of the policy, and I wanted to read it before going, and et cetera, et cetera, and I've missed a number of opportunities where I could have gone easily, and not having it on my phone, ready to go. But also, I have a yearbook that I need to return, to place in the library of Dunbar Middle School, and I don't want to ask the superintendent for permission to take, that's all I need to do, is take this yearbook too, but to remember the day before when I know a particular day I can go, but then I have to remember the day before that I need to report it to go to, into the school. It's just not been working out for me, so I still have the yearbook that I need to take to the library. Only members who approved or voted in the positive on a motion may bring the issue up again for a vote later on. So I won't be involved in trying to edit or change this policy, but I just wanted the new board members to know that only you guys who approved it can make a change or rescind it in the future. And finally, I want to reemphasize that our students need to learn how to learn if they're going to grow and if they're going to get in the groove of educating themselves. They need to learn those details of learning. They need to learn how to store information, how to read effectively, do mind mapping. They need to have great nutrition. Healthy mind, healthy body works together for getting these academics up. And I may, just a little tidbit out there, if you somehow make it a fun day of dressing to impress, it will improve their tests. I heard this a couple times, where if you have all the students dress up in their best, whatever that is, on a testing day, it will bring the score up automatically across the board to a degree, it will collectively come across the board as increasing our test for that one simple action, probably because of the attention that it brings to testing. And we need to bring LCS ownership to students. The students need to feel like they own not only their mascot or their school or their class grade, but also the division, if we can somehow get that in their hearts and minds. And then exercise in the minutes off their chairs and outside matters. I think that's a valuable thing to remember as we try to get these students to increase their academics. The last word is, would to God that all our students turned out to be as entrepreneurial, as McNominous, as caring and sharing as Charlie Kirk was. So if anyone continues to bash or slander that name, it's ridiculous, it's unnecessary, and it's actually an ideal name to promote privately, publicly, as, to students, as someone to look up to and to follow in principle, many things that was publicly shared by his life. So I just wanted to bring that up as something I'd like to promote, publicize. Thank you.
Mr. DePaul?
Just to reiterate, the main goal of us, this organization is education, academics, and it's not going to be achieved without discipline in the classroom and having our students and teachers safe. So that's definitely something that needs to occur, and I just want to keep it at the forefront because we need to educate these children.
Thank you. Mr. Connor?
The possibility of having one meeting, combined meeting in November, on the 11th. There are a lot of, by the town, different things, on the 18th, have one meeting on the 11th. Better coming right back on one week later. I don't know if we need to bring, if I can get a second on that, and we can get a vote on that.
You're suggesting that in November, instead of, 4th is an election day?
Yes.
So normally, we have a meeting on the first Tuesday of each month, so there will not be a meeting on 4th of November. In place, we'll have a meeting on 11th, and 3rd Tuesday is the second meeting, which is right back-to-back, so what you're saying is, and then comes the Thanksgiving?
Yes.
To combine the two meetings to 11?
Yes, that's what I would like to make a motion.
I don't know, I'm not a parliamentarian, is this the place to make a motion, or we just consensus, is one meeting okay with everybody?
Sure. What do we do, both meetings in different ways, or we just combine it all?
Just combine, just, there'll be just one meeting, 18th there will not be. So we'll just technically cancel the meeting on 18th, on the informational item, and that's it.
We'll have public comment and all those things.
Yeah, yeah, okay. As long as we, I communicate with the public, that's when public comment's going to happen.
Everything will, structure-wise, will stay the same.
Okay.
We have a consensus, Madam Clark? Would you?
I'm okay.
Mrs. Lowry, would you, do we need a vote on this thing?
No, I mean, everybody said there was a vote.
You're good with that?
So you want to move the board meeting up to the 11th?
Yes.
We combine, we cancel the 18th meeting, and the board meeting will stay on 11th. Oh, I see what you're saying, yes. The board meeting is moved to 11th.
Okay.
So it'll be a bigger meeting.
That way, we will have the comments on.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, you're right. Yeah, your hard work is correct. It will have the whole public comments and everything else. 11th was the work session. Anything else?
That'll be it for me.
Thank you. I call you Pastor Nigel, forgive me for saying that, but go ahead.
It's okay, I'm just going to be brief. You know, before we got onto this board, I didn't realize the enormous responsibility that this school board has, and I'm enjoying it because I see that we have an opportunity to make a tremendous impact on the case. I realize everybody's pitching and feeling the heavy lifting sometimes on the superintendent, and all of us are trying to work to the good of these kids, and so I'm hoping and I'm excited that we steer on course and we keep it going, and I, you know, one of the things, as I said early on, you know, parents, they have a perception of maybe what it was in the past, and they want to see progress. They want to see that we're making, you know, progress and distraction, so I just, again, hope that we, as a team, can put some things on the radar that would signal and indicate that we're making positive progress. And I want to thank all of you, the members of the team upstairs, you guys are doing a great job as well, so let us kind of keep working together so we can help these young people.
Thank you, Pastor.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Barron?
I've got three things, like I do every time. You guys will have them all memorized by the time we're done, but I just want to hit them very quickly. First is trust. I just want to commend the level of transparency and communication that has been continually asked for, requested, talked about. And I would just say, you know, if, I know sometimes we're going to get it right, sometimes we're going to get it wrong, it's just kind of the nature of moving something this big the way we're trying to, and so if there's a community member who feels there's a lack of communication or a lack of transparency, I just ask for patience and want you to know there's not, for a lack of desire, but there's a lot going on. But I really believe we'll see what's being stated, is that there's going to be a higher level of transparency and communication and accountability across the board, and I'm all for that. So, second is transition, and that leads into the, from what we just talked about. I want to emphasize and appreciate the report you put together, I want to highlight one thing that you put on there, was this shared responsibility. When we talk about transition, a lot to do to figure out how to move things, the way they need to move, and it's not just a superintendent's responsibility, it's not just a school board's responsibility. In fact, I would argue in a lot of ways, more of the responsibility falls on community stakeholders, because there's so much that you guys can do, that the community can do, that we're just nine, nine people in a board and an administrative cabinet, right? So I just really want to emphasize, you said shared responsibility, emphasize that schools are part of the larger Lynchburg community, and long-term success requires collective ownership and investment from all stakeholders, parents, students, community members, business members, you know, all of it. And so on those lines, that leads me to my last one, transportation. I'm just going to put it back on the community again, we need bus drivers. And I know it sounds like it's a silly thing to keep coming back to, but you don't, I don't think people realize, I don't have time to get into it now, how many things are connected to this issue? Issues of trust, issues of attendance, intruency, so many things, okay? And I live in a neighborhood where transportation is not, there's not choice. The kids in my neighborhood don't have a choice to get to school another way. Parents don't have transportation, the parents are working, whatever it is, so it's not something we can just abide. Like, we have people in this community that have freedom of schedule, that have the ability to drive, we need people to step up and do it. You can sit and look at the school board and look at the administration and criticize all day long, if you have the ability to drive a bus, you should be doing it. That's what I'm going to say to the community as a whole. I did it.
I second that.
I know, there's lots of people that would second that, but we need, we lost two more this week, the two more that were on HR report that we no longer have, and that's already with a shortage. We need bus drivers, and we need people who was willing to step up and say, I'll do something that's not convenient, is not convenient, so that we can do some things specifically to address major issues with our community. So please, give that more considerate thought, and I hope that the applications spike every time I say something like this. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple of comments. First comment is just my personal comment. I speak as an individual school board member. The politics has no space in the school system. The kid doesn't care whether, which party you belong to, what the color of your skin is, they come and they're everybody's friend, and they eat meals with everybody, you know, and that's the, they look up to us as being their role models, so we need to portray that aptitude, attitude, and in our day-to-day functioning, that we are not biased or opinionated by anything. Having said that, I see Ms. Beth is there, and I want to yield the rest of my time to you. Would you please come to the podium? You did something special last week, and you need to be recognized. Please do come and share with the community, you got the camera at hand now, what you and your team and the kids did. You know, we talk about kids. I have permission for Dr. Majid before I recognize you. So go ahead.
Well, thank you very much. I was here just as an observer tonight and a supporter of all things LCS. This month is Farm to School Month, and this past week was National School Lunch Week. And so in support of that and in recognition of that, we had our first community dinner. And thank you to Dr. Gupta, to Dr. Majid, to Dr. Davis, to Mr. Marshall, and to Ms. Brown for showing up for what I hope was a delicious meal, and that highlighted food that was prepared by my staff, some volunteers within the community, and served featuring local produce, local poultry, and I just, like, it was an amazing evening that also highlighted some of the talent that is going, from our students. We had a quartet from Heritage High School played. We had some of the classes at Bedford Hills provided centerpieces that were just beautiful. I think they were more, caught more attention than some of the meals that people were eating. It was just a really fun evening. It's one of three community dinners that we will be having this year, an encore of what we did last year, to highlight the good things that are going on in Lynchburg City Schools and the importance of nutrition to the academic and overall well-being of our students. Our next community dinner will be on February 12th. If you have a loved one, it will be a romantic evening centered around a Valentine's theme, so make it a date night. And then we will have our final event on May 15th, and that will be a picnic style. We'll be asking some of you around the table to be manning the grill stations, as we did this past year, to provide a picnic, to just celebrate the end of the year and it's another successful year. It's a pleasure, it's an honor to direct our school nutrition program. We are here to partner with the academic instructional team, the school, support systems for our students, and I truly, truly do believe that nutrition is at the heart of and the foundation of our children's success. So thank you, Dr. Gupta.
Thank you for everything.
I really was not prepared for this tonight, but thank you. Thank you very much for your support.
I just may add, for everybody who's watching it, and I saw it, and I'm going to snitch on you, Dr. Majid. We were eating dinner, and three, four young men were trying to collect, you know, in young days, we used to do, you got a dollar, you got 50 cents, let's put money together so we can eat and buy a meal. And somebody sitting beside me saw that, and their hand went into their purse, and pretty soon, those young men and women were buying food. So thank you for doing that. Appreciate everything you do. That's remarkable, that needs to be acknowledged and told to people. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next one is the closed session. Pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, the school board needs to convene a closed meeting for the purpose of discussing the following specific matters, the superintendent's evaluation goal-setting. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Motion. Second.
Madam Clark, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Barron?
Yes.
Mr. Eileen?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Mrs. Lowry? Do you may have all your?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mr. Delil?
Yes.
Mr. Poe?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll go upstairs for the closed session, and come back.